Evening. This is the Harwich Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, March 26th. My name is Duncan Berry. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. This is being held in person and it's also available for viewing in a go-to-meeting format. Those of you who are watching online can see the login information that's provided with the communication package for every one of our meetings. Members of the public with an interest in providing testimony this evening are encouraged to attend if there's any item on the agenda that is of interest. According to Mass. General Law, anyone who intends to record the meeting must first notify the Chair, who will then inform other attendees at the start of the meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to record the meeting? Seeing none, the meeting is called to order and I'd like to invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. So this evening we have one public hearing and one public meeting. The public hearing is for case number PB 2024-08. Christine Menard, Executive Director of the Family Pantry of Cape Cod Corp., has applied for a site plan review to create forty-four parking spaces and an approximately twenty-thousand square foot licensed portion of the town-owned land behind 139 Queen Anne Road, Assessor's Map 57, parcel G6-2 in the IL zoning district. I'd like to welcome you to the table here to address the board.
Hello, everyone.
Or the podium if that's...
I can sit either way.
Whatever you want.
I'm comfortable either way.
Whatever works for you.
This is a little closer. So first, thank you for taking the time. We really appreciate the chance to have you review the requests for our additional volunteer parking. So thanks for so much for that. As you mentioned Duncan, it's for the space that we're asking for is forty-four additional parking spaces. To give you a little history on the pantry, it was started in 1989. We have the largest pantry on the Cape and we serve, excuse me, the entire Cape. Last year, we served just about, just shy of fourteen thousand people. And that's out of the twenty-three thousand people that self-identify as food insecure on the Cape, meaning that, it's a fancy way of saying they are hungry, they've been hungry, or they're worried about hunger. Our mission is very, very simple. It's to provide food and clothing for those in need. So to put this into perspective and to explain why we're asking for the additional space is that I took over the pantry as the Executive Director in 2016. Prior to that, I had been a volunteer for a couple of years and I actually worked with the original founders in 1989. I worked for Stop &amp; Shop, so we supplied the food pantry. So I've been there since the get-go, basically. In 2016, we averaged a hundred and eighty-nine families a week. And in 2023, you can see by the graph that we have up on the boards there, we were averaging six-hundred-and-thirty-nine families a week.
This is at the Harwich location?
Right, at the Harwich facility. This is, only counts the food that comes out of the Harwich facility.
Okay, gotcha.
And right now, through the second week of March, we're up to seven-hundred-and-fifty, we're averaging seven-hundred-and-fifty families a week. So it just keeps, keeps growing. If you do the math, between 2016 and now, it's about a three-hundred percent increase. And then, and that's all done with sixty-three parking spaces that we are assigned to our existing building. And what's important to understand and the reason this is so vital to us is that on any given shift, we have roughly up to fifty volunteers that come in to help do the work. On any given shift, we can have anywhere from sixty to two-hundred families show up in a two-and-a-half, three-hour window. And there's just no place to put their cars. So we've done everything that we can currently. We've expanded hours, we've expanded the number of days that we're open. You know, we have, right now, we have ten separate shifts and the important part is there's ten shift changes. And that, I'll get to that in a minute. But what happens and where it gets really dicey during a day, and the pictures that you see over here, that's from, that's the quiet day, that's Tuesday. And so they're basically, the parking lot gridlocks. And this is on top of, we double-park volunteers, we double-park the trucks, you know, we stuff, we stuff them in everywhere we can think to do. But what gets dicey is that when you have fifty volunteers in the building working and then you have a shift change, you got another forty or fifty people that need to get into the building, but they can't get in the building until the other people leave because they can't park. So then you have this, you can't move, right? So then basically what happens is I have to go in and say, blow the whistle and say, "Everybody get out." We slow everything way down for about ten or fifteen minutes, get the switch done, and then we bring it back up again. So that forty-four parking spaces up on the hill will eliminate that shift-change problem. The parking that we're asking for will be for volunteers because you want the families to be closer to the building because they gotta take all their groceries out and you don't want them traveling all the way up to the garden, basically. We do, we accommodate everybody as best we can, but it's just got to the point where it's virtually impossible with the number of people that were running through the building and then the number of volunteers that it takes to get that food out the door. We are incredibly efficient. One Saturday morning, for three hours, we did two-hundred-and-eighty-three families. If you do the math, that was a load of groceries going out the door every ninety-three seconds. So we are a machine, if you've never been there. But literally, it's bringing us to a standstill because we can't get enough people in the building to take care of the work that we need to do and literally just to find them a place to park. So that's why we're here. That's just the nickel tour of what we do, basically. I can talk about this forever and I won't. So that's why we're here. Jim Merriam, who has been helping us out on this project, will go after me and if you have questions, and then John O'Reilly will help with any engineering questions that you might have. So I'll stop. Questions, comments, anything?
Not yet.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jim Merriam. I'm a volunteer at the pantry. And first, I'd want to compliment Chris Menard as our Executive Director. She does an excellent job and the pantry has a fantastic reputation, probably one of the best on the Cape of nonprofits. I'm sure most of you have heard and are very familiar with it. More than a decade ago, the Family Pantry approached the Town of Harwich to request use of municipal land to the rear of 133 Queen Anne Road for a garden in which produce would be grown and distributed to pantry clients. Mary Anderson, then serving as the pantry's Executive Director, and I negotiated a ten-year license. This proposal for a parking lot expansion was developed following that prior positive experience. I wrote to the Selectmen in early 2023 requesting a similar license to use the municipal land, the same thirty-five acre landfill parcel, immediately to the east of the garden. On May 23rd, 2023, a new ten-year license agreement was executed between the Board of Selectmen and the Family Pantry on a small portion of Map 57. The license agreement was drafted by Town Council John Giorgio. The agreement provides for a T-base with pervious material as recommended by DPW Director Len Cooper, solar-powered lighting, and a wood guardrail around the perimeter. The pantry has accepted a proposal from Peter Gavoni from Forestale to clear the lot. O'Leary Landscaping has conveyed permission for Gavoni to access the lot from the abutting property so as not to cause further congestion during construction. The pantry has received a proposal from Relco of Yarmouth for lighting. The pantry has received support from Director Butter, Rob Chamberlain, who owns 139 Queen Anne Road and who would also benefit by the relief of vehicular congestion between the two commercial buildings. The pantry and Chamberlain lots share a vegetated depression for stormwater at the rear of a parcel. The pantry currently has sixty-two spaces plus four for trucks and a textile trailer. The proposal is designed to add forty-four spaces primarily for volunteers. The tree removal will enhance the sunshine in the garden. The pantry has retained John O'Reilly and associates to represent us and to provide professional engineering services. Just turn it over to John.
Good evening. For the record, I'm John O'Reilly. I've been working with the pantry for probably about four or five months now. So the, so what we've done is we've come up with a T-base surfaced parking area, as people have said, forty-four spaces in total. And I'm just gonna walk you through the plans, starting in the rear part of the pantry property. Their current parking area is paved and adjacent to the garden, there is a two- or three-foot-high boulder retaining wall. So the proposal is to alter that retaining wall and creating a twenty-four-foot-wide paved access road, if you will, up the slope over the garden area and then up onto a more gentle slope, which will then be T-base material. I call for six inches of T-base material. And the way the grading is worked, working is that the south side of the parking lot is the high point at about fifty-five, elevation fifty-five, and the north side of the parking area, adjacent to Mr. Chamberlain's property, is around elevation fifty-point-five. So there's about five feet of relief in the, in the, in the T-base parking area. So we have good drainage control. And what we've done is because of the location of the leased area, that pit is, which is pitching all towards the north, towards Mr. Chamberlain's property, we've designed the drainage to accommodate a twenty, I'm sorry, a one-hundred-year storm event. So if, if and when we do get a very significant rain, the leaching capacity within the swell will handle the one-hundred-year flow and not cause any worsening or not cause any damage to the off-site property to the north. The drainage facility does consist of a vegetated swell, which will be used to settle out pollutants and debris, silt and so forth. And then within that swell are two elevated inlet pipes that will, as water ponds in the swell, it will back-drain into a subsurface leaching facility, which is sixty-two feet long and twelve feet wide and comprised of six-thousand-gallon leaching pits with stone. All of that will be under the ground as part of the parking area. The way we've set up traffic flow for this, this parking lot is that the person will be coming up the paved access and enter the first right after the kiosk. And they will have spaces on either side as they travel south. There's a turnout on the southern side of the lot and then we have another bank of spaces on the east side of the leased area. We do show a series of lights. I do identify the spec on them. This was, came from the electrical contractor that the pantry had worked with and these, as best as I can read, are dark sky compliant. And even, we do, we do call for seven twenty-foot poles, but I believe that should be fifteen-foot poles, not twenty.
And they're solar-powered.
And they are solar-powered. We're not running electricity or utilities out to that area. The entire parking area will be surrounded by a guardrail, quote-unquote, a guardrail, which consists of four-by-four or six-by-six posts, four-by-six posts, excuse me, and then a two-by-eight rail. This serves two purposes. One, keeps the cars within the parking area and also because we're doing a T-base surface, we can't stripe the area, we will use the guardrail as, to line up the cars so that we paint, I think we talked about light paint marks on the guardrails so someone could pull up and not park in two spaces, per se. So we are asking for three waivers. I think the first one is typically you folks like to see a zoning table when someone comes to you for site plan review. That's typically used for when you're doing a building component. This, of course, is a parking area, so we didn't really wanna get into dealing with the existing building and all of the zoning components with that. So we're asking for a waiver for that. We are asking for a waiver for shade trees within the parking area. Obviously, to the west, we have, pantry has the garden and by taking the trees out where the parking lot is proposed, is actually gonna increase the sunlight and the growing potential of that area, so we don't wanna impact that. And then, of course, to the east is, you know, very well-vegetated, it's a wooded area, it's part of the municipal landfill property. To the south, we have Mr. O'Leary's landscape business and there is this...
A right-of-way.
A right-of-way through there for the power lines. And of course, to the north, against Mr. Chamberlain's property, there is some woods there before his parking area. So I think the property will be well-screened. And again, as Jim had said, they did review that with Mr. Chamberlain. So with that, I think I've covered most of my points. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Oh, I'm sorry, the third waiver.
Play the waivers.
The third waiver is for, under the stormwater handbook, because of the type of soil we're dealing with being very rapid perk, the requirement is to provide forty-four percent total suspended solids reduction prior to the swell. And in looking at it, we opted to seek the waiver from, from the regulations and because in the end, the total suspended solids through the swell that is being proposed and the subsurface leaching, we are over eighty percent removal ultimately by the time the water starts discharging into the ground. So although we're not meeting the forty-four percent, technically, the site ends up with a reduction of greater than eighty percent discharge. So that was the third waiver. Now I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Flynn.
Okay. I'm just gonna do a brief overview of the project. I'm still learning the process of all of the technical...
Please don't worry. No excuses needed. Oh, my gosh. Yep. There we go.
All the boards on the way at all? Everyone can see that?
He's taking it down.
Great. So we have the Town of Harwich, you can see, and the project is located just south of Route Six along Queen Anne Road, where there is a small dot right there. And bringing the site a little bit closer, we have the food pantry right here and all of the parking that they have all along in the back here. And the site for the proposed parking lot, you have the garden right here and the site next to, to, for the parking, for the proposed parking site. The applicant is the Cape Cod Food Pantry. They are proposing forty-four parking spaces and the applicant is seeking a, three site pla, is seeking a permit for site plan review in accordance with Harwich zoning, 325-55C, Section 2. The applicant is also seeking to ask for three waivers, which include zoning compliance table, a waiver for native plantings, and as well as the design standards for utilities. And copies of the application packet were also distributed to other town departments. There were no concerns raised. There was a fair amount of support at our community development team meeting for the project in terms of the level of service that they provide for the region for, not only the Town of Harwich, but the Cape as well. So the, for the application and the hearing documents, a Form A and narrative, Form A and narrative, as well as site plan, were submitted. A license agreement between the town and the Family Pantry was also submitted. Proposed site plan of land, Mike James O'Reilly, was submitted, the Butter application, stormwater management report, as well as the application fee. And the town is the property owner for one, for the proposed, for the proposed site of the parking lot. The subject property is twenty-eight thousand, just over twenty-eight thousand square feet of town-owned land, south of 139 Queen Anne Road and east of the, of the Family Pantry garden. And the applicant has proposed to create an engineered parking lot with forty-four spaces, which has been reviewed by the town's consulting, engineering consulting firm, VHB. They have recommended that we grant the three requested waivers and they have vetted the stormwater management proposal and have, have signed off on the project as presented by the applicant. And staff would also recommend granting the three waivers that have been requested by the applicant. Would you like me to go through the recommended conditions of approval or do you wanna?
What do you think?
Up to you if you'd like to.
Yeah, me as well.
Okay, I'm happy to do that. I, the proposed project shall be in accordance with the site plan referenced in the application materials above. The decision shall run with the property. The decision shall not be affected until it's recorded with the Barnstable Registry of Deeds. Changes to the site not authorized under this decision will require further review. Modification to the decision and the applicant shall conform to the inspection certification or as-built requirements pursuant to the Code of Town.
Great, thank you.
So through you, Mr. Chair, just a couple of clarifications. First, through you to Christine, I just want to clarify for the record, the only thing that is on this, this site plan review special permit is strictly a parking lot. I just wanna make it clear that we're not amending any other, any other site plan that currently exists on the, on the, where the Family Pantry is located. I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Correct.
For those that might not realize that. Second question I have through you, Mr. Chair, did I hear you say that you thought the poles were supposed to be fifteen feet high on the, on the lighting?
Yeah, they, we, Jim and I were looking at the paperwork again today.
Okay.
And it did say, all the lighting projections were based on a fifteen-foot pole.
Okay, so could we...
I'd be happy to revise that.
Could we, if we could just put that in as a, if you're agreeable to put that in as a condition that...
Sure.
That will confirm that they're dark sky compliant and that the pole shall be fifteen feet high.
No quota then, yeah.
Okay. And then, can that get noted on the, can the plan get revised so that the notation is corrected?
I'd be happy to revise.
Perfect.
Yeah, we just noticed the discrepancy today.
Understood. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Simple one. Ms. Menards had said, I think the number of spaces you mentioned existing were fifty-five?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four?
Well, there's sixty-six. We use three spaces for trucks and a textile.
Yeah, sixty-two open and then four committed to trucks.
Okay, and, but your lease says thirty and then there's forty-four new ones, so I'm, the math isn't adding up for me.
What lease that says thirty?
I'm looking at the lease that came in my package.
You're looking at, he's looking at the license agreement?
License agreement.
If I, if I could, I think it's because it's a brand-new parking lot for forty-four spaces.
Correct.
In addition to what already exists on their, on their existing site plan. So their existing site plan for their building has the, has the sixty, however many spaces, correct? This is an additional forty-four on a separate lot that hasn't been developed before, so...
Okay, yeah, I get that, but why does the license agreement say thirty?
Because the license agreement is only with the town for that one lot. The town doesn't own the lot, the land that the Family Pantry's on.
Okay, all right. That clears it up. Thank you.
Right.
Any other questions? I just wanted to say, I've seen, I had an office right across from 139 like twenty-five, thirty years ago and watched you guys move in and it's amazing, the amount of change. And it looks to me as though what you're simply trying to do is what was accomplished at the library a few years ago, with a raised turnaround in the back, probably twice as many parking spots, but...
You're, you're welcome.
It works like a dr, I'm welcome. Yeah, yeah, wow. So no, it was just...
I did it.
Oh, you did? Okay, so yeah, well, bravo. I mean, I use it all the time, so that's a good note. Any further questions, comments? How about a motion to close the hearing? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I think we are going to take a look at another motion. So who wants to be the...
I'll take this one.
Right.
So I would move that the planning board grants a waiver, the waivers as requested, one being a waiver from Section 400-Appendix 4, zoning compliance table, as the project involves the construction of an overflow parking area for the pantry activities, that no structure is proposed and a waiver is being sought to eliminate the need to complete the zoning table for the entire parcel. Two, that the planning board vote to grant a waiver pursuant to the provisions of Section 400-Appendix 2 for native plantings as the project is within a native vegetation and buffer area to the east as well as, which is well-wooded, the waiver is being sought to eliminate the need for additional screening and plantings along the proposed parking area. And three, that the planning board grants the waiver from the provisions of Section 400-13, which is design standards for utility, as the project proposes a swell with subsurface leaching facility and the town's engineering contractor has agreed that the design is sufficient to, to meet the needs at the location.
I have a motion. Second. I have a second. Any further questions, comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
So I would also move that the planning board adopt the following findings of fact regarding planning board case 2024-08, Family Pantry of Cape Cod Corp., site plan, and grant a site plan review special permit with the findings of fact. Hearing date was held on, public hearing was held on March 26, 2024. The applicant is the Family Pantry of Cape Cod Corp. The applicant's representative is Christine Menard. The landowner's, I believe the landowner is, is actually the Town of Harwich, not the Family Pantry of Cape Cod, although the Family, I will note that the Family Pantry has a license agreement from the town, which was submitted in the packet. The address is 133 Queen Anne Road, Harwich, Mass. The location is behind 139 Queen Anne Road, located at Assessor's Map 54 Lot M1-1. The zoning district is industrial light zoning district. The development type is an addition of forty-four parking spaces on a land leased from the Town of Harwich. The lot area is twenty-eight thousand three hundred and forty square feet, plus or minus. Project description, the applicant is seeking several waivers and site plan review special permit in order to add a parking lot of approximately forty-four spaces on a parcel of land with twenty-eight thousand three hundred and forty square feet, which is leased from the town of Harwich. Applicable laws and regulations, a site plan review special permit is pursuant to section three twenty-five dash fifty-five C, sub two of the Code of the Town of Harwich. The project review process on January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, the applicant's representative submitted all required application materials for site plan review special permit with a request for several waivers. The public hearing notice was advertised in the Cape Cod Chronicle on March seventh, twenty twenty-four and March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Copies of the application package were sent to the following departments. Inviting them to comment, namely health, water, fire, conservation, public works. Those departments, there were no concerns. Duly advertised, a public hearing was held on March twenty-sixth. The application documents are as follows. One, a Form A and narrative. Two, request for site plan review waivers dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Three, license agreement between the family pantry and the town of Harwich. Four, the proposed site plan of land final draft is prepared for family pantry of Cape Cod by J.M. O'Reilly and Associates, Inc., dated January twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Five, the Nevada application. Six, stormwater management reports, operation and maintenance by John M. O'Reilly, P.E., PLS of J.M. O'Reilly and Associates Incorporated, revised report dated March eleventh, twenty twenty-four and the application fee. The property is the town is the property owner of one thirty-three, one thirty-three Queen Anne Road and, and the applicant is the licensee. Subject property, as we previously stated, is twenty-eight thousand three hundred and forty square feet of a portion of town owned land, south of one thirty-nine Queen Anne Road and east of the family pantry. Known, shown as Assessor's Map fifty-seven and fifty-eight, parcel M one dash one, and is located within the industrial density zone. Said all of that. So pursuant to the, including the findings of fact, in addition to adopting the findings of fact, I'm further move that the planning board grants, with conditions, a site plan review special permit for the twenty-eight thousand three hundred and forty square foot portion of town owned land, south of one thirty-nine Queen Anne Road. Subject to the following conditions, one, that the proposed project shall be in accordance with the site plan referenced in the application materials above, with a provision that all lighting be dark sky compliant and that the poles shall be fifteen feet high. And further, that the, that the special permit be revised to start reference. Two, that the decision shall run with property. Three, that the decision shall not be effective until it is recorded with the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. Four, that changes to the site not authorized under this decision will require further planning board review and modification to this decision. And five, the applicant shall conform to the inspection certification and as-built plan requirements outlined pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich.
We have a motion.
I'll second that.
And we have a second. Any further questions? Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, it's been a while.
Thank you very much.
It's been a while.
That was an okay motion.
It was just okay. It was a little wordy. It's been a while.
What?
I went.
No, no.
To.
Oh, there was? Oh, yes.
That's true.
Maybe my son was. Yeah.
I was absolutely shocked.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Remembering it.
Nice coincidence.
Christine. Amy and Jess. Amy looked after Chet.
Oh, you're Chet's dad?
Yeah, I'm Chet's dad. And so Jess, yeah.
How's it going?
Good, if you want to horrify them, he's in middle school.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he's, he's ten, he's in fifth grade.
Is he seven?
Yeah. How they doing?
You don't feel old until you hear about him.
Yeah.
You're doing great.
Good.
Just his nurse and Amy.
She's a freshman? God bless him.
But I'll tell them.
Tell, tell them to say hi.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so we move on this evening to the public meeting portion. An A and R, item number PB twenty twenty-four dash ten. Donald and Mary Gould through their agent Donald Poole, PLS of Uttermost Land Survey, Inc. have applied to the board to endorse an A and R. Proven not required for a plan of land in Harwich, Mass., number one forty-four Judge Street and number seven Sparrow Hawk Road, such as map eighty-eight, parcels T one and twelve and T one to eleven in the residential rural and drinking water protection zones. So Christine, I think you probably have a comment on this for us.
Yes. PH, our, the town's consulting engineer did review the A and R and has recommended that the planning board endorse the A and R as presented.
Do we have any other questions? It's an A and R, it doesn't make any difference.
A move that we endorse the A and R presented as part of PB twenty twenty-four dash ten. Donald and Mary Gould through their agent Donald Poole, PLS of Uttermost Land Survey, Inc.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comment? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we can send this on the way out, right?
Yes.
Perfect. So for new business, I take it everybody in the room has heard the tragic news of Craig Chadwick's recent passing in last month. I'm, you know, I'm sure it comes as some degree of surprise, but the speed with which it had happened, I think is just kind of shocking to me. I had no idea it was coming along so fast and, and him and we've, you know, all I can say is I got to know him, I think in twenty fourteen when some initial work that I had to bring before the board and he was a real stickler and I really appreciated and learned a lot from his tenacity and attention to detail. He was, was a remarkable human being and, you know, I personally, you know, the board is, is gonna, you know, gonna have difficulty without him, but I personally think he was, he was a fine man and I really enjoyed knowing him. If anybody else has a thought or a tribute, this is a good time.
Yeah, just like you said, Craig, he definitely was, when he had something on his mind, he was gonna let you know. And, but he was always just a, was a really good guy and loved the town of Harwich and wanted the best for everyone and really wanted to understand every T crossed, every I's dotted, anyone that came before us.
That's right.
We'll miss him and obviously the planning board, but more so him as a person.
I would just echo what Alan said. Craig took his role as a planning board member very seriously. And as a, as a resident of Harwich and he, to that end, he did, was never afraid of asking, of asking a question or of not knowing what, you know, what the answer was, which, you know, is refreshing. And, you know, I'm sad to see him, see that he had passed, so.
Well, with that, I, I think it was a beautiful tribute that was in the Chronicle and we're gonna miss him. So moving on, we also have some draft minutes to pass for February twenty-seventh meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the draft minutes of February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four as written.
Any further comments?
Second.
We have a second discussion, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Hi, it's Jane, I was in here.
Oh, you have, you have, okay, so we have one abstention. The annual reappointment term expiration notice, so that is a default condition, right? So we are reappointed unless you opt out.
Correct.
So please, let's hold on to what we got here.
Well. Don't get any ideas over here, Alan.
Basically, don't get any ideas, right?
Anybody.
Right.
Any of you.
And then we're, we had a discussion about the idea of hybrid meetings and what was, I mean, did you want to lay the groundwork for that discussion?
Sure.
As it came up.
The information that I provided was really what the, the town policy that was set by the select board. And it's, it's not necessarily hybrid that we came to know during COVID nineteen. So the chair and a quorum of the boards still need to be in person in order for, in order for, say, one member or two members to be, to participate remotely. In order for those members to participate, you still have to just notify, send an email to the select board and you can send it to the town administrator's office to Megan Eldridge and in addition to copy Duncan and myself. And she will then send, get it on the, their next agenda to say, to approve remote, to, to approve a member's ability to participate remotely.
Is that on a per meeting basis or is that kind of like a block?
It's, it's on a, you, if you have specific dates, you should specify those dates that you will be away and you can do it via a block or if it's just one day that you, one meeting that you know you'll be absent, to specify that meeting date.
Okay.
And then does it have to be advertised as differently or noted or not?
No.
So those rules go back to, to the black letter law of the open meeting law. So under the open meeting law, you, you need a quorum of people in the room. You can have a board member participate remotely and that is not the same as a hybrid meeting. A hybrid meeting is one everybody, including the general public, can participate remotely. And the difficulty with a hybrid meeting is that the attorney general's office has ruled that if, that if a remote meeting goes down, so if the Zoom link goes down, the whole meeting has to end. So if you're in the middle of a permitting process, that permitting process would have to, to end and get continued. That's a lot different than just a member of the board being able to participate remotely. And, and the notion was always that you had to be able to, to actively participate and hear what was going on in the room live. So we've always been able to do that. The board is, the board of selectmen has typically let people who might be out of state for an extended period of time participate in that manner, which was pre-COVID and pre, pre, right, hybrid and Zoom.
I was gonna say, through you, Mr. Chair, we had members who would go down to Florida.
Right.
Like Alan Harris would be, he'd be down there and he would just call in. And we had the bridge, bridge number that would call in. I think I used it once because I got like childcare, whatever. So like I was doing it from home.
So that's been, so this is a new, just for clarification, that we have to tell the select board when?
Yes.
I'm kinda.
Their position has always been that you've always had to get permission from the select board in order to participate remotely.
For each, so Alan did that for each incident?
He would have, so like if, when David was, if David was in Florida for a couple of months, he would get permission for that timeframe to be able to, to, to be remote. So they've always had that, that, they've always taken that position, at least since I've been on the board.
Yeah.
And probably prior, because you were before I was.
Cause I, I sent an email to the select board just saying, I need, I need to do whatever. And then there's a bridge number that was set up per meeting. And you just call in. And you could theoretically, you could watch online and then listen as well.
So is the process for a bridge number or is it to use a webex or go to meeting?
Um, my understanding was that they could do the remote, I mean, on, on TV, but I'm happy, I can find out for, I can confirm that and, and get a clarification on that.
Dave was doing it by go to meeting, so I'm assuming that technology is probably the.
Yeah.
Recently, he's did it by go to meeting, but prior, he used to do it just by cellphone.
Right.
Yeah.
And actually, he would do the cellphone and the go to meeting and it was always a problem.
Yes.
So it was like, no need to duplicate efforts here. But I think the, the thing is because we need.
Audio, that was all.
You need a quorum in the room.
We need a quorum in the room and so at this point, you know, quorum in the room is the, the critical thing, so. Which is the trigger for, need anybody, you know, anybody that needs, that wants to join the board, you know? Let's get the word out. Uh, did you get Alan?
Apparently, just one.
Just one.
And, and how many, and one or two alternates, I would think?
Two.
Two.
So Paul Doan, is he on your board now?
Yes, he's on historic.
Cause he was interested in joining this about six months ago or eight months ago, but I didn't hear back from him, so.
He did, he joined Capital Outlay?
He, he did, okay, okay.
You know, where I saw it was the community center puts out a monthly newsletter and that's where I found out about it. And that's what started the process of pulling the application, filling it out and what got me here. So it comes out at the beginning of every month, April's just a couple of days away. I don't know who's in charge, but it shouldn't be that hard to figure it out.
Christine can actually request for the, the selectman's office to actually put out, they will advertise and they'll do, they'll do posts and, and other things to, they'll announce at a selectman's meeting, so. They do various reach outs when you need people. They used to advertise in newspaper in the Chronicle.
When was the last time there was a story in the Chronicle on the board? Cause I can't remember.
Like the act, like.
Like a discussion about the function and duties and scope and activity of the board.
It's more like just reporting like the, like ninety-five mile street, like.
Right.
Like something like that.
Exactly.
But they don't do a story on the board, what I think would be interesting.
An expose.
Well, no, they just a discussion about what, you know, what, maybe interviewing people. Cause then we say, you know, we could use more people, there's always interest in talent and contact the board.
Sure, you could reach out to Jamie Goodwin and ask to do a little video with, on channel eighteen to talk about seeking membership. I'm sure that is an option as well.
Great. I'm just thinking ways we can get the word out that.
Yeah, article in the Chronicle too would be, I know like for our school, like my school, we get a lot of hub through the school, through the Chronicle, so.
So Billy Galvin will be back, I guess, next week, so I'll contact him if he's interested. It's not like a super sexy topic, but you never know.
If you're gonna get that going, you may check with the other boards and commissions and see if there's any vacancies. Just because when I saw it, it was, there was a list of vacancies. There was probably three or four. And I, the one that attracted my attention was planning, but there were, I don't know, I don't remember what the others were, but they appeared together in that little blurb in the newsletter, so.
I know there's a regional school committee.
Well, and I also believe that Selectman McCaskill and Selectman Howell are the interview committee for the Board of Selectmen. So they're the ones responsible for.
Right.
For bringing forward applicants and, and interviewing them and bringing them forward to the selectmen for appointments, so.
So Christine, you want to take us through the, the comprehensive town plan update?
Yes, that would be great. The comprehensive plan, the next forum is Saturday, April sixth, from one to three at the Harwich Community Center. We had our first community engagement this past Saturday. Unfortunately, we had a very small turnout, so it would be really great to get as many planning board members as well as other members of town committees and boards to participate, in addition to members of the public. And there are other opportunities for the open space plan that we are also working on in addition to the housing production plan. In addition to the housing production plan and a hazard mitigation plan as well, so there's a lot of planning going on, but. Anytime there are these community engagement forums, it's really important to get as much input from the public. In terms of growth in land use management, economic development, housing, transportation. As well as open space and recreation, so. Any, if you know of other individuals, please help us get the word out, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, are you asking planning board members to attend?
If you think, if you can, that would be great as well.
I would just suggest that you post it, just because of the, the topic being what it is. If a quorum is there, it might be considered deliberation for the board.
We did that this past Saturday as a fail safe, so we, and I think a couple of other of my colleagues did that as well for their boards. So, but Mary, thank you for the reminder, it's helpful.
Not a problem, glad to hear it.
Any other business before the board? Just wanted to remind you before you exit to please sign the my hours and thank you this evening, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.